Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Winchendon Board of Slectmen. It is Monday, July 10, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Mr. King?
Yes, I'd like to call a meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
Thank you. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would just raise your hand and make yourself known. And for the record, I see none. Thank you. Slectmen's comments and announcements. Mrs. Blanchard? Mrs. LaPointe?
Not right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. The only thing that I would like to say is I would like to introduce to everyone, Bill McKinney. He is our interim town manager, and welcome to your first board meeting. Are there any public comments or announcements this evening? Yes.
Hello, I'm Jill Sackett. I'm here tonight as Chair of the Winchendon Cultural Council. The Cultural Council collects information every year to help inform it as to how to award the grant monies that it receives from the state to different groups, organizations, artists, and whatnot who perform here in Winchendon. And we have a survey we're running this year. And I would love for everyone to fill it out who lives in Winchendon and has opinions about what kind of entertainment you would like to see prioritized here in town. I realize I didn't bring enough copies for the combined meeting tonight.
Is that available online, Jill?
It's going to be, but we're working on that. But if anybody would like to fill out a paper copy and just leave it here at Town Hall in the Cultural Council mailbox, I'm happy to pass it out to you right now. Any takers?
Oh, yes.
Okay, I will pass those out. And thank you very much in advance, and we will get it out online as well.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment or announcement this evening? Yes, please come forward. You're welcome. Hi, for the record, please state your name.
Yes, I'm Mary Harrington, and my mom is here too, Yvonne Harrington. And we're just here to introduce ourselves as the newly elected Chair and Vice of the Historical Commission.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, thank you so much. And if now is a good time, I just want to give a quick overview of what the, of who we are and where we've been, where we are, where we're going. It's not long. My mom had me cut a whole bunch out.
Okay.
So, okay, so as you may know, there's, there's five total members on the board right now. We can have a total of seven, two being alternates. And including us, we have Guy Corbersaro, Lois Abear, and Jay McCrowan. And the glue that holds us all together is Janelle, Janelle Schrazinski, did I say it correctly? And it's, I believe probably you know Lois, because she was the town clerk for several decades. And Jay McCrowan has been on several committees and boards in the town. And we, so we have two vacancies, and we've had several people step forward expressing interests, which we're very excited about, because in the past, of course, we dealt with a lot of apathy. And I think, I think a lot of that is due to the Community Preservation Act Committee, that, and the people who've been working really hard on that, including David Romanowski and Amanda Phillips is carrying the torch forward. I did sit on that committee just a short time before the vote, and I hope to continue as a member of that as well and make sure that we move forward. You know, I was surprised. I didn't think it was the right time personally, but I know the Community Preservation Act has been adopted by many towns during COVID because of all the outdoor use, space use. That was one of the questions we had for Massachusetts Preservation Committee and the individual who guided us on that. So it usually takes three times to get it through, and we certainly want to do it when Winchendon residents want it, you know, when it's the right time economically and when it makes sense. But with, with almost a guarantee, nothing's guaranteed, but 100% return a year. That means if we give $350,000, we get back $700,000 that we can, we can use to, to help preserve Winchendon. So kudos to Guy Corbersaro for, he's former Chair and the second Vice, which is his wife Peggy, and also Justin Salzbeck, who was a real proponent of historic preservation. And we hope that we can continue, continue that era. The big, the big project we did while I've been on in the last 10 years is the Cumberland Farms project, and not everybody in the commission agrees that is a, was a successful project. I personally do, although we did not, we were not able to save those structures. We did work with Cumberland Farms and on blueprints that tried to mimic seppis and, and, you know, give reference to Joseph Fruits and the 100-plus years that they, they served Winchendon. And so we're just baselining now. We're looking at master general laws, we're looking at bylaws, you know, the reconnaissance report. We're very happy to help support from the Master Plan Committee and the strategies and goals there. So we're really making sure that we align with other committees and just being present. So we welcome everybody's input, but, you know, aware of the, the good, the good idea fairy, which is why we go back to our plans and our, and our goals to make sure we stay on track. But certainly welcome all input from the town to the commission. We'll be updating our contact information on the website. And that's about it.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, I would love to, on behalf of the board, extend an invitation to the Historical Commission, you know, when you get squared away, if you want to come, we can put you on an agenda.
Wonderful.
And have them get a little bit more in-depth conversation about your visions and your goals.
Sure, we can, we can give updates and, and all that kind of stuff. Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any further public comments and announcements? Seeing and hearing none, moving on. We have a joint meeting this evening with the Finance Committee. We have some year-end transfers. Mr. McKinney, are you going to address this, or Mrs. Calandrella?
I think we're going to pull them all up right now.
Okay. And I'm sorry, just one quick announcement. I was notified just before the meeting. Again, the recording, the equipment is maybe cutting in and out on the broadcast. So those of you watching at home, I apologize. It is being recorded. So you will be able to see the, the full recording, the full meeting. Okay. So year-end transfers, this is something that we, we do every year about this time. It's a matter of ensuring that the accounts have the proper dollar amounts to, in them for closing out the fiscal year, in this case FY '23, which ended June 30, 2023. We're now in FY '24, so we're doing these, taking steps to close out the books for, to help close out the books.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment. The Finance Committee does not have a copy of these because they came in this afternoon. I understand they're in your Dropbox and they're on the screen, but we don't have a copy to take home so we can balance them with our year-to-dates. So in the future, please bring copies for us so that we can keep track of finances as we go forward, because once we leave here tonight, we have no access to them.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just echo the concern. I understand we've gone through a lot of transitions right now, and it's a first-time experience for a lot of the staff. But typically, the, the members of the Finance Committee would spend several hours just, just confirming that the accounts that we're taking money from have the adequate balances. And so that's our, our due diligence. So it's a little uncomfortable for everybody here when we don't have that opportunity to go through it. That said, you know, I'm sure that, that these have been checked out by our accountant and, and likely be very accurate. But as Mo pointed out, we'll end up bringing this home and doing what we would have done before the meeting. So I'm sure we'll figure out a way to do it a little differently next year.
So the first budget transfer, a monetary transfer is $200 from the Community Development Salary Account to the Internet Expense Account to cover a shortfall. Questions or comments from the board? Questions, comments from the Finance Committee, or do you want to ask that? Or do you mind if I ask that?
No, you can ask that, sure.
From the combined, from the combined group, any questions or comments on this request? Seeing and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the transfer of $200 from the Community Development Salary Account to the Internet Expenses Account.
Second.
Being seconded to approve, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
All right, and the Finance Committee entertain a motion to transfer $200 from the Community Development Salary Account to the Internet Expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions, questions? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Next is a request to transfer. Do we know the name of that first account? What account that is? There's no name on it.
Looks like it's the 33, in-school transportation.
In-school transportation account.
Which according to this doesn't have a balance.
It's because the remainder of the fund hasn't been released from the PO. So if you look, it's, it's still stuck in the PO status, which is going to be released.
Two, okay, sped transportation, there is a balance, okay.
It is $18,000, they're asking for 35.
Right, because it, because it's still stuck in the, it's still stuck into the PO. We called the school this afternoon to verify that all bills are paid. So Katie's going to release it out of the PO status and put it back into the, into the account. Does that make sense?
When does this transfer have to be done by?
When does what?
The transfer have to be done by?
15th.
July 15th.
That's a, that's a state law.
Which is Saturday, so I believe it'd have till Monday this year, because it falls on a Saturday. We might expect that there's money coming in that has been encumbered that won't be used, but we don't know that.
No.
No, we, we do, we do know that all bills are paid. We, we confirmed with Amanda Babinski at the school this afternoon.
Right now, that account has a balance of $18,000. You're asking for 35. What are they dumping in there to make up the difference?
They're not dumping. If you look, it's, it's tied up.
It's tied up, the encumbrance is $118,000.
Correct.
So what you're saying is that of the money that they encumbered, they're not going to be needing it all.
Correct. There's two bills that are going through the warrant, which closed today. And then the remainder of that account is going to be released.
So do you know the final number?
Do you know what the remainder of that account will be?
I don't have the warrant in, warrant in, in, in front of me, but there was, there was two bills on, on that account, which are already in munis. But you guys have munis sheets from last week prior to this warrant, because the warrant didn't close till today.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. LaPointe?
Is it this warrant that we have right here? You could look for reference if it's this one. Is it the one we just signed?
Nope.
I think so, no.
The warrant hasn't been signed yet.
So, so we're not sure what those two bills add up to, then?
I don't have.
It's going to be, it's going to be less than the amount. I mean, we.
You get a ballpark figure, so what would be left, freed up from the encumbered account?
So we didn't, so I can tell you that we didn't pull all the funds out of this account. This was the last account that we, that we tapped into. And I want to say there was a bill for $14,000 and $35,000.
$2,000, $35,000, okay. So roughly $40,000, $50,000, I mean.
Yes.
All right, so.
And we only asked for 35.
We're going to end up with a balance of better than $50,000.
I would imagine, yes.
All right. Entertained a motion to approve the transfer of $35,000 from the sped transportation account to snow and ice materials account.
So moved. So moved.
He's calling for the financial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'll move it.
Okay, seconded. Any questions? I think we understand the situation. There's money encumbered that'll be freed up once those bills are paid, and it would cover the $35,000.
Can I ask, the encumbrance, isn't that obligated? Is that considered obligated amount that's being in the works to be paid?
It could be, be either one of two things. Either you've ordered some, something so you encumber the money, so when you get it, it's there to be paid for. What this, what the school department does with their specialty transportation is they encumber all of it at the beginning of the year, and then, and then it's charged against the encumbrance. So there's often some money left at the end of the year. And what I'm hearing Brian say is that of the $118,000 that's encumbered right now, there are two bills that need to be paid that amount to less than $50,000. So there'd be $68,000, $70,000 then in the unexpended part of the, of the report.
We, we went over this at length this afternoon to make sure everything was available.
If this should happen again, if you could just bring us those numbers, I would feel more comfortable.
Yeah, I didn't think of, I didn't think of it, you know, we were trying to find $200,000 this afternoon, and we managed to do it, but we, we noticed that it was, it was tied up. And that's when I picked up my phone and called the school department. Wasn't in the office, so they couldn't send an email to release it. So that's where the sticking point. Otherwise, we would have got it released. You wouldn't have seen it on your sheets, but I could have printed you a munis sheet then.
All right, we get a motion in a second. All in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, any opposed? I don't know if it passes. All right, it's 601.
Board of Slectmen entertain a motion to approve the transfer as discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention. Just pass aye. Thank you.
This one prob, this one shows the same exact deal as the last one.
So this is the, the total amount of encumbered funds that wasn't used or going to use?
So on this one, again, we called the school department. The school department says they make 11 payments. We went into munis, verified 11 payments. The funds haven't been released because we needed an email. But 11 payments have been made, so it's 10 equal school year payments and one, one summer payment, and all payments have been made.
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair? Can someone tell me how many of these transfers that we've never seen before are going to come before the committee tonight?
Only the ones like this for, that are under, snow and ice should be under the PO status, because that's coming from the school department. If it was the town, then we fit, then we could physically release it upstairs. So it's only snow and ice.
I know that they've already said it, but you're asking us to vote on something that we've had no opportunity to review, we haven't had any opportunity to prepare for it. I mean, I believe everything you say, no doubt, but it's, it's a very uncomfortable position.
It is.
Well, that, I believe that the, the 15th of July makes it very, very difficult when you don't even have a, the last warrant closed. That, that makes it difficult for us.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, we, and the Chair and I spoke at length today about this process because it's something that should have been done earlier. You know, we would have liked to have gotten the information out to, to everybody. This is my first full day. You know, I started a couple, couple of, a couple of days ago, but this was, you know, we had to dive in and look at the, look at munis. We had to look at all the accounts. We found some, you know, that had been a little bit negative, which is why we had to make these transfers. We had to look at every single opportunity we could, including, you know, as, as Brian mentioned, the school department that had some unexpected, unexpended funds, because while you see some other transfers, the biggest is snow and ice. You know, if the, if the $200,000 doesn't get approved, it ends up going on next year's recap, and affects free cash, and, you know, affects what we're able to do. So that's why we're hope, I apologize that, you know, this, we didn't get this information to you earlier. We just went through it all today to try to make sure that, you know, that we could get it done before the end of the year. So that's something, that's a process that will change for next year. Like I said, the Chair and I had a great conversation about that today. So we'll be working with the staff to make sure that we get the information out in, in much better time before this happens again.
I guess what I'm leaning to as that was to say, we've got till Monday to do this. Let's get the information that we need to have, get copies to, to the Finance Committee. I mean, the Finance Committee, we're asking them to vote on things we don't even have the paperwork in front of them to vote on. I, I would feel much more comfortable if we scheduled a meeting on Monday, since we have that time. Get our ducks in a row, get all the encumbrances and understand what the balances are. Get copies of this to the, each of the, the, the members of the Finance Committee so we could do this properly, because every one of these, we're going to ask, it's going to be the same thing. Well, so I would respectfully request that, that we do that.
Mr. Chair, just a question. So that, if we approve these Monday evening, the 17th evening, or do they have to be filed or something done by Monday? So we would, you would need that approval by the end of this week in order to meet a Monday deadline?
I'd have to check with the Vision of Local Services. Like I said, they, they sent, they sent something out. I just happened to glance at it.
We could meet, we could meet Thursday.
You could meet Thursday?
Yeah. Then.
If I could just check.
I just think that it's going to make the process much, much quicker, number one. If we've had an opportunity to get all the information and, and review it prior to the meeting.
If I could just pull my board as far as availability on.
Miss, Madam Chair, we're just talking Finance Committee. I don't know if, because you have copies of it, whether you're comfortable or not. There is a school committee meeting this Thursday down here.
We've got them today as well.
So we would have to meet upstairs in fourth floor, which is.
Would it, would it help if I put munis on the screen?
No. It's the time factor. I mean.
Well, I can, I can pull up live numbers, is what I'm saying.
No, but you said these first two are the only ones that we're looking to transfer from the school side? The rest are within?
They are within, within the town.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
I mean, $200 or $300 I'm comfortable with, but $66,000 and $35,000, I'm just not comfortable.
We'd have to be aware that there is a bylaw or a charter that states that we need to do what we can to avoid scheduling Board of Slectmen and School Committee meetings at the same time. They can be held jointly if the situation does require it. Just need to make sure I put that out there.
Okay.
So what is the board's pleasure? Are we comfortable going through these this evening ourselves? Or do we want to, thank you for joining, welcome.
I think we should wait until Thursday, and I do think the bylaw says regular meetings. So I think stuff like this can be an exception.
Would you be available Thursday, Melissa? Mrs. LaPointe, would you be available Thursday?
Yeah.
Mrs. Anderson, would you be available for Thursday to do the transfers?
What time?
What time Thursday?
6 o'clock, 5 o'clock? What time?
6 o'clock.
Six? Could not do six? Could you do a later time or just not going to work for you?
Probably later.
Okay. Would you be available?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm available.
Okay.
Thursday.
Thursday at 6, 6:30? What's, what's best for you?
One member could not make it at 6, could do 6:30, I believe. Could you do 6:30?
I can try.
Okay, so that may be. So if you could do 6:30, that would be, that would be beneficial. If you have to do 6, those of us who can make it at 6 will do so.
And, and I would just assume we could get a new packet, I guess, of all the transfer requests in a timely fashion. So no later than, if we get them at the end of day tomorrow, great, but certainly by the end of the day on. great, but certainly by the end of the day on, on Wednesday.
Well, I would think by noon on Wednesday, so we have time to go through them at the dispatch.
Yep, we can get those, we'll get it done.
Even the day, you know, so we get that day ahead of time, then we can get that. All right, then, then I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to adjourn. We're going to recess and, and meet upstairs.
What about the rest of the transfers that we did have copies of? Do you want to do those or do you want to do them all on Thursday?
All of them all at the same time. Something was learned.
So just to clarify.
Let's not do it piecemeal.
The agenda item that we have this evening, the joint-held meeting with the Finance Committee to do the FY 2020 year end transfers, that item is going to be not taken up this evening and it will be done at a joint meeting to be held this Thursday, July 13th, at 7:30.
6:30.
Beg your pardon. I'm looking at seven for the, 6:30 on the, in the fourth floor conference room. Okay.
Leave this here. We will act on the transfers from the contingency fund at our meeting. So we'll get those out of the way. And it'll be just the transfers that we work with.
Okay.
Move to recess and reconvene on the fourth floor.
Move seconded, seconded, all in favor, aye.
Thank you. All right, moving on in our agenda. We have before us some appointments and resignations. Let me jump back to that one. First up, we have a request to appoint Linda Delasanta, three-year term to the Cultural Council.
I believe Linda's here tonight.
I believe she is. Would you care to say anything? Let the record state that she was present. All right, any questions, comments from the board? Seen and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move to approve the appointment of Linda Delasanta to a three-year term on the Cultural Council.
Second.
Made and seconded, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Thank you for stepping forward. We also have a request for an appointment of Joanna Drugsvold. Is she here this evening?
She is not.
No, okay. Just wondering how badly I did her last name. Questions, comments regarding this? This would also be for a three-year term. And we do have the notice from Jill Sackett saying that they would welcome her. Any questions, comments from the board? Seen and hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the appointment of Joanna Drugsvold to a three-year term on the Cultural Council.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we have a resignation. David Alexander needs to, is resigning from the Parks and Recreation with regret. Questions coming from the board? If none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the resignation of David Alexander from the Parks and Recreation Commission and thank him for stepping up and wish him success in his new endeavor.
Second.
Anything further from the board? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. All right, we have one request for an entertainment permit. This is for the United Parish Church to hold a concert on 7/14. This will be gospel singers, donations will be accepted. Do we know what time this would be scheduled for?
It's at 7:00 PM.
Seven, thank you. Oh, it does say that, my apologies. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I was just wondering if other groups are interested in the park, what is the process that they go through to use the park?
I don't know 100%. I believe there's, you know, the first step would be to, does the license permit application come from the town manager's office or from?
It does, yes.
It does, okay. So that anyone who's interested can reach out to the town manager's office?
Yep.
And you start them down there?
And we refer them to Parks and Rec and Tiffany can check with the scheduling if there's any conflicts, but it goes through all the department heads, Tiffany being one of them.
All right, great, thank you.
But where would they start?
They start at the town manager's office. Usually they fill it out online.
Exactly where to go and what to do?
Mm-hmm. Especially with their, the new coordinator. Before it was just, it went out to all the department heads, but for the other parks.
Okay, thank you. I do see, appears to be no concerns with, with any department heads. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair. Just want to point out that it will be at the park, but if it's raining, they're going to move it into the United Parish Church.
Now, if it's raining and they have a $15 fee, do they get their fee back?
I would imagine so.
And the 15 fee goes, $15 fee goes directly towards Parks and Rec?
To the park, yep.
All right, any further questions or comments? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Move to approve the entertainment permit for the United Parish Church Gospel Concert for July 14th, 2023, starting at 7:00 PM at the Winchonan Community Park.
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Was that everyone? Okay. Under new business, there is actually a 7.1. There's no documents for this, but it's something I did want to bring before the board. When Mr. McKinney interviewed for the position, he did mention that he was going to be away for a particular period, and I'm sorry, the dates, Bill, are?
July 27th through August 12th.
7/27 through August 12th. And the question arose whether the board felt a need to actually appoint an acting interim in his absence.
No, it's only two weeks, right? Which is normal vacation time.
Yep, that's fine. Well, he's, but he's, he will be out of the country, so I just wanted to make sure the board was okay with that.
No, we always designate somebody to sign in, in case you can't be here, correct?
That's what I've asked, that's what.
Beg pardon?
That, that's the question is, you know, do I designate someone to sign or?
I would assume so. I would assume the Chair would take your responsibility of signing anything that had to be signed.
I never had in the past.
Well, we've never had this happen in the past.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm okay taking that on. And I will speak to any, you know, I can talk to any town employees that I need to to make sure I'm doing the right thing, so, okay.
Would, would we like to get clarification on the process and maybe speak about it again on Thursday?
Probably.
You can, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so the question is, if the, if the interim town manager is physically unable to sign any documents for whatever reason, what is the procedure to get them signed?
And it has to be a pressing document, nothing that can wait two weeks.
Correct, something urgent. Yeah. Okay. If you could see, if you could come up with something on that, that would be great.
Will do.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, thank you. So now 7.2, discuss request for proposals bid for the town manager search. We did go out, put out an RFP. We did receive two, two replies. Mary put together a, a log sheet, witnessed by Deb. Did Municipal Solutions provide anything? I didn't, I don't see anything scanned in. Was it, is it here and I just didn't see it?
Yeah, we just put in the pricing because usually when we put an RFP out, we go with the lowest bidder unless there's a reason not to.
Okay.
So I, I did provide documentation from Municipal Resources with their proposal based on their $14,800 price.
Okay, and if, if the other company had come in lower, then we would've gotten documentation from it.
Exactly, yes.
I see, gotcha. All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Thoughts? I was only on page seven, Madam Chair, so if we could have a couple minutes maybe.
I do think it's, it's kind of difficult getting the, the documents at the last minute.
Do we want to carry this over to Thursday? So we have time to take a look at it. I mean, I understand that, you know, that there was a considerable price difference, obviously. We are somewhat familiar with Municipal Resources Incorporated, but at the same time, I can understand the desire to go through the actual proposal.
I would make a motion that we postpone this and take it up on Thursday and also get access to the second proposal, just to look through.
Access to the second proposal.
I have it this evening, so I can pass it out.
You, you do have it, okay.
Yep, we only received the two bids that came in.
How many reams of paper did they?
Uh, it was quite a packet, but I think they. I mean, electronic, it's whatever. Yeah, no, that's fine, I can pass it out this evening. That way you can compare the two before Thursday.
That'd be great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, so 7.2 is going to be tabled until our Thursday, July 13th meeting. All right, that takes care of new business, old business. This is a request for an amendment of conservation restriction off Robbins Road. Please come forward. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, a little bit closer to the mic, please, and for the record, please state your name.
Yep, my name is Aaron Nelson. I'm a project manager with Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust, and I'm here to ask the board to review, approve and sign an amendment to a conservation restriction that the board originally signed in 2019. This is 30 acres of land off Robbins Road along the New Hampshire Line. And the board, it's slightly unusual, we usually are here to present new conservation restrictions. This is an amendment to an existing conservation restriction, and this was prompted by a new federal law that was passed in 2022. It directed the IRS to issue some new language around boundary line amendments and termination of conservation restrictions across the US. The language that existed in the Hillist CR when it was recorded was very close to the IRS language, but not exact, so we're just amending it so that it lines up exactly out of, out of an abundance of caution, basically. That's sort of the basics, I'm happy to answer any further questions or anything else, yeah, that the board would like to know.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
Could we ask in a nutshell to explain to us what the amendment means?
Sure. So basically, the, the two provisions, and like I said, the language was very close but not exact. One had to do with boundary line changes. So just for some context, outside of Massachusetts, conservation restrictions don't go through any review process, they're just private transactions between land trusts and land donors. Here in Massachusetts, we have a state template and they go through review both by the Select Board, but also by the State Division of Conservation Services. So there was already language around boundary line amendments in the prior CR. This is just new language that the IRS has designated specifically. So it basically sets out an equivalent process, but the actual, the text of the language is different. And so, you know, here in Massachusetts, it's slightly different than in other states because we also have the added layer in protection of any sort of amendment to a conservation restriction would also have to go through the state if there were sort of, any sort of boundary line dispute. But we have sort of those additional layers of protection, but other states, states don't. With regard to termination, that's something that in Massachusetts is very difficult under Article 97 to actually terminate or extinguish a conservation restriction. It requires a two-thirds vote of the legislature. Again, that's not the case in, in other states, and so this was language that the IRS put in, you know, as an additional protection for, for CRs throughout the country. But basically, the language has to do with the proceeds of any sort of termination or extinguishment by a court order or, say, eminent domain. So if there were compensations, say, for a conservation restriction that got extinguished, there's provisions originally in the CR that, as it existed, and those are mirrored in the new language too. Again, the text is just different about how sort of the property rights interest and the compensation for the different parties, the landowner and, and in this case, the land trust. And specifically, the IRS added some language around how land trusts could use those proceeds, and they have to be used to protect additional land, which was all, also sort of already mirrored in the Massachusetts text, but, you know, again, the text didn't exactly line up, they were very close, but just out of, but out of an abundance of caution, we want to make sure that they're exactly mirroring so that it protects the CR.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
Two things for me. This is me being OCD as an attorney, but the Registry of Deeds for us is actually just Worcester Registry of Deeds. I know there's a, a north, but it's not, south isn't added to ours, so it's just Worcester Registry of Deeds. And I'm, I'm not understanding why we as a board would be acting for the grantor making this amendment. I'm, I'm not understanding that part.
Because we had to approve the first one, am I right?
The CRs.
And so therefore, any amendment to that, one that we already approved in 2019, we have to approve the amendment.
Is there, in the, the original, is there any reference to us or any, like, we're not even referenced in this document.
But it always comes before the Board of Selectmen, yeah.
Yeah. So Massachusetts is unique in that it requires the Select Board always to approve conservation restrictions for any, any conservation restrictions that, you know, are physically within the town. And there is, I have the original here if you'd like to look at it, but there is a signature page and mirroring language to the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seen and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I would make a motion to approve the change of language in the current already approved conservation restrictions on Mount Grace Conservation Land and Trust. Did I do that right?
On the parcel referenced this evening.
Off Robbins Road. Is that enough?
I think so.
Second.
Made and seconded to approve the amendment, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
I just do think south should be removed. Just in the grantor's title, see, it's Worcester Registry of Deeds.
Would the make of the motion and second of the motion?
I will amend it to reflect that.
To strike the word "south" for just Worcester Registry of Deeds, okay. You okay with that as a second?
I'm okay with that.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could just sign it. and then it'll be notarized as well.
We have Deb to notarize it.
Well, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on. 8.2, General Code Discussion. This had been, Mrs. Diggle brought this before us a few months ago. And we put it off because we were in end-of-year town meeting discussions and stuff like that. So this is back before us. Mrs. Diggle, I will turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm looking for direction from the board and whether or not you want to continue with this project. It started in 2018. Let me just explain it a little bit. It's a company, General Code. What they do is they take a town's bylaws, charter, policies, procedures, zoning bylaws, and incorporate it into one big document. And this document is then put on their website, which is accessed through our website. And it's easily searchable. If you search for a certain word, you'll find it everywhere within the document, and all of the different policies and procedures and bylaws will be included. There was a committee at the time that was formed to do this. The funding for it came from a Robinson-Broderick grant. It was spearheaded by the former town clerk Judy Rascioni. And she did receive the grant from Robinson-Broderick for $10,800. And once they did receive that grant, they formed the committee. They met extensively for at least a year, if I recall. I wasn't part of that committee. The town manager was, the town clerk, I believe, the police chief. I'm not sure what other members. Probably Tracy from the planning was part of that committee to review it all. It was a very extensive study. I mean, I have, in my office, half the paperwork in my office is about General Code. It has editorial and legal analysis on it. It did get reviewed by our own town council. And it's like 90% done. So the point here is, what do we do? Do we, the steps to finish it are to have, the zoning board needs to review the zoning updates to it. And your board would need to look at the bylaws and how they, they kind of reorganized some of it and put it in the proper paragraph or section that it would make sense. The charter and the bylaws were reviewed by, you know, after our last meeting, I wanted to have more thorough review of it. So Dr. Ward, who has recently been on the Charter Bylaw Review Committee, she took the document, and I owe her a big thanks. And she went through it one by one, and she compared what General Code did to what we currently have and made sure that it existed in both. And she said it does. The documents that are on the website, I know it's thick. It's redlined, so you can see the actual changes. I don't think we should go through that one by one tonight. I just would like to know if you want to continue with it, then we'll do maybe further analysis so we can actually look at those changes at the next meeting. And then the zoning would have to have their own public hearing on theirs. And then we could actually get it on the ballot this fall. I mean, we could get it on the special town meeting warrant for approval, and then it could go on the ballot in May.
Thank you. I know this is quite, quite in-depth.
Great examples that you could link to. I don't know if those, were those linkable on there? Because they're PDFs.
I didn't try it.
No. No, they weren't linkable? Oh, sorry.
We can find these, you know.
Yeah, just to see how it works. Those towns are just a few of the many in Massachusetts that use this. And it's quite easy to use and informative. And I know Mary has some experience in Ashburnham because they did it right before she left there. If you'd like, the lady who's helping us with this, Claudia, she'd be happy to attend a meeting. I don't know if she'd come to a meeting, but definitely remotely, if you need her to, to answer any questions. There's a link to the website, to the project itself, with tons of information, if anybody would like that. You could see the steps that were taken. Everything is documented, just to give you a better sense of all the work that's already been put into this.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
I think that it's currently next to impossible to search the website and any documents in it. So I wholeheartedly agree with moving forward with this, and I would make a motion to that effect, please.
Thank you. I'm turning my head this side, so I better move my microphone over. All right, so we do have a motion to continue to move forward with the General Code project. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the same reason.
Thank you, Maiden, seconded. I would just, any discussion? Any further discussion, I always ask? Mrs. Anderson?
Madam Chair, I'm just very hesitant that it needs to be gone through very, very carefully to make sure that we are adhering to the intent of our charter. Because so many times, especially in the past couple of years, that our legal counsel has been playing fast and loose with the charter. And I've been very concerned, and I would hesitate. I'm always hesitant to change a charter. Or, you know, because we want it to align with somebody else's policies or whatever. That we have to be very diligent and very, very careful.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Diggle.
It's my understanding that the town charter does not get changed at all. That's not codified or anything. It goes in exactly as it is. The bylaws do, but not the charter.
But we have to make sure that these bylaw changes support the intent of the charter.
Yes.
And that's my concern. Because it would be too easy to put something through and say, well, the charter implies that, it doesn't say it. And the bylaw says something different.
Right.
So we have to be absolutely diligent before signing on to any change. That's my very big concern.
So if this vote passes this evening, the next steps are, we as a board, review the general bylaws.
Correct.
And how they fit into this code, how they placed into this code.
Yes.
At that same time, we can look at the charter. The planning board? No, you said zoning.
Actually, it's the planning board that would have the public hearing. I'm sorry, yes.
For any of the zoning bylaws?
Correct.
Okay. And then, should it pass both of those steps? The next step is to put it on a town meeting warrant?
Fall town meeting warrant.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I agree, we've put so much time and effort into this. I'd like to see it completed correctly, obviously.
Madam Chair?
So, yes.
May I add that the town clerk, Wendy Stevens, is very supportive of this. It's very helpful for her, like, when there is a change to our charter or our bylaws, she doesn't have to worry about where it goes or how to do it. She just sends it off to General Code, which she has been doing since 2018, any changes she's sent to them. So they've been keeping track of it and getting it ready in that final document. And that's, she thinks that's going to be a great help to her office.
Yeah, no, I can agree that having one set of, one place to go is, and as Mrs. Lapointe pointed out, the way that they are currently on the website, it's difficult to always find what you need. But a document that you could search by keyword or whatever would be very helpful. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? We do have a motion on the floor. And the motion is to continue moving forward with this process. Has been seconded. Last call for discussion. Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Abstention? Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much, moving forward. Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have the town manager's report. Mr. McKinney?
Yes, thank you. It's been a quick, quick report because obviously, I've been here just a short time, but it's been great. I've been able to meet all the department heads and a lot of the employees. Met with the mayor of Gardner, the town administrator for Templeton and Ashburnham, you know, get to know the neighbors. We had our first staff meeting today, so it's been going very well. You know, started looking at Munis. Obviously, we wanted to get ready for this evening. You know, working with the finance staff, who is fairly new, so try to be able to help them out as much as possible. And I met with a lot of residents and who came in to say hello. So I appreciate everyone's warm welcome.
Thank you very much. And last Wednesday, I think it was, the day that I came in, Justin was still here. And Justin has put together a document of the projects and where they stand. And gave Bill and myself a copy and reviewed things because, as we've talked about, we don't want, we don't want to lose the momentum with what we've got going. I loved what you said about, Bill, about seeing that table upstairs covered with project papers and moving forward. So I think it's all in good hands.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
I haven't checked the website yet. I was actually just going to do it. So if it's already on there, I apologize. But I would like to see something on the website and Facebook and whatever else we use just to say, welcome, you know, our new, our interim town manager is Mr. Bill McKinney, dah 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 dah. I feel like...
Sure?
Yeah, I don't know. I feel like the process has been very quiet.
It has been quiet up until, up to this point. So are you ready to be launched into the community?
Yeah, Linda had requested. I need to send her a photo and a little bio for the, that's on me.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay, for minutes, we do just have one set this evening. These are the minutes of June 8th. I'll take a moment for you to review them. This was the meeting to Thursday, June 8th. We had a couple of permit applications that we addressed. Questions, comments? If none, I'll entertain a motion. Madam Chair? Mr. Ward?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of the boss meeting of June 8th, 2023, as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you, Maiden, seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
I will abstain.
Thank you, one abstention. No communications, so our next meeting will be this Thursday, the 17th? Sorry, 10?
13.
13. At 6:30. Yes.
Question for tonight or maybe for Thursday? Jane Lapointe. When you review the RFP from the possible headhunter company, I'll be very interested in any references that they make to how they intend to work with the search committee and when that might happen. Because I'm a member of that. And I'd like some clarity on that. That would be helpful, so just asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we do our executive session this evening. I move that under Mass. General Law 30A, Section 21A, Number 2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel subject interim town manager contract. And we will reconvene in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Blanchard?
Aye.
Mrs. Lapointe?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ward?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We are in executive session at 7:33.